Middle School Cafeteria at 211 Cushion Street, Stoughton. Just a couple of reminders, town meeting reps, please make sure you have checked in with your precinct chairs for your attendance purposes and to receive your assigned clicker. This meeting is also being broadcast live through Stoughton Media Access Corporation and is being recorded for future broadcasting. Please rise and stand as if you are able and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, please be seated. Couple of quick announcements, just asked to remind everybody, there is Wi-Fi available here this evening, if you brought your iPads or you want to be on your cellphones. Username is, I believe, Student Wi-Fi and the password is B-Nights, K-Nights. All lowercase for that password, B-Nights. B is in boy, K-N-I-G-H-T-S. I was pretty good in spelling along the way. So, Mr. Cavy, would you like to make the announcement? I'm told, do you have an announcement that you'd like to make? Yeah. Sorry to catch you off guard.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me just open up my calendar so I can get the right date. Should've planned a little bit better.
Would you like me to come back to you? I can come back?
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you.
Sure, I'll come back. Alright, just to reintroduce people by, I'll just go down the list of the town officials that are here this evening. From the Select Board, our Chair Deborah Roberts, Vice Chair Steve Cavy, and Select Board Member Scott Carrara, Lujito, here this evening. And from the School Committee, Catherine Weiss, the Chair. I'm not sure if Fabian Francois Morissette's here, I don't see her. Lindsay Kreckler, is she here this evening? Amando Babosa, he's here, he's down back, and Christine Shannon, is she around? Okay, welcome. Okay, also we have Mark Tisdale, our Assistant Town Manager. We have Brian Winner, Town Council. We have Stephanie Carrara, our Town Clerk. And from the Clerk's Office, Kelly Johnson and Sam Rigo. To my, your left, my right, Mary Jane Martin, interim Town Accountant. And to my left, your right, Juan Anokian, Chair of the Finance Committee, and Eric Anderson, acting as Vice Chair this evening. I believe I caught it, I ran down everybody, we have to thank SMAC for being here this evening, for recording and putting this meeting out live this evening. Feel free to watch it on replay anytime you want. So, I'd like to give a warm welcome to all our town officials and of course you, the town meeting representatives. Okay, this time, to ascertain whether we have a quorum to proceed with the town meeting business, I will now ask each precinct chair for the number of town meeting reps present. We need at least, I believe, Stephanie, eighty-five? Okay. So if we're ready, you're going to call the precinct chairs. Precinct one, Juan Fox. Twelve. Precinct two, George Stolinski.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Precinct three, Matt Callis.
Nine.
Nine. Precinct four, Julie Gito.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Precinct five, Kamel Drews.
Ten.
Ten. Precinct six, Christine Yakabachi.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Precinct seven, Diane Dolan.
Nine.
Nine. And precinct eight, David Sheehan.
Twelve.
Twelve. Thank you, Pat. Alright, we have ninety-five, so we can proceed with town business. So don't anybody leave this evening until we concluded our business.
Yes.
Yep, alright. Mr. Cavy, would you like to, are you ready?
Yes, I apologize.
Oh, it's okay, we can come back, just let me know when you're ready. I put you on the spot, so I apologize. Okay, everybody should have their clickers, anybody does not have their clicker right now, please raise your hand and we'll get you one. See everybody that has their clickers, do we need to do a test? No, we're not going to do a test this evening, you all been officially designated as clicker makers. Alright, I just want to let you know, procedural motions that we voted in on Monday night are still in effect. I'm just going to give you a recap and summary of our process, so nobody has any misunderstanding. Each article this evening will be advanced by the town moderator, providing article number and page number. If the motion has a positive recommendation, the article's motion is read by the Finance Committee Chair and will be seconded by a town meeting rep. If it's not, if the article does not have a positive recommendation by FinCom or has not been heard by FinCom, another person, another town meeting rep will make the motion. Now, just to be clear, we got a little confused, I got a little confused on Monday evening, in case of amended motions, the process will be the following. And thus, I'll put this process and procedural motions for the next annual town meeting, so it's all written in writing and clear. First, we'll put on the floor the motion that is written in the warrant book, it has to be seconded. Then, if there's an amended motion that's been filed on time, a town meeting rep can make a motion to advance the amended motion, it needs a second. Once it's seconded, the body, you, the town meeting reps, will discuss and vote on accepted the amended motion. If that is accepted, that amended motion now becomes the main motion as amended, okay? Just remember, if we amend a motion and accept it by the body, it's now called a main motion as amended. We have a couple amended motions this evening, you'll see this in practice. And if voted on, and it would be discussed and debated, and so voted on, it passes. If it doesn't pass, then that's it, the motion's over. Am I correct, Mr. Town Council? The article is done, it gets defeated if it doesn't pass. Alright, so, anybody, everybody clear on that? It's pretty straightforward, you'll see it in practice this evening, and if we have any issues, we can follow up with some questions, technical questions if needed, on the process. So after that's done, also, I mentioned, the standing committee reports are also read after the main motions put on the floor. The presenter of the article, or the amended article, as the article as amended, has up to ten minutes to present the article. Then we're followed again by technical questions, two questions for a town meeting rep, and that's followed by pro and con debate. Town meeting reps have up to three minutes to provide their comments or pro and con statements. And then if needed, and only if needed, we can have a summary by the presenter of the article up to three minutes. Alright, so that's about it. I think that's all clear. We're good, everybody should be good on that. And now we're going to proceed with the business at hand. Just to refresh everybody's memory, I'm not going to go article, article, but we have proceeded through, on Monday evening, November sixth, we completed Article seventeen. Alright? Tonight, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion on Article eighteen and nineteen for a dismissal, they're both going to be withdrawn.
Don't move, that's the plan.
Okay. Motion's been made by George Stolinski, seconded by Cynthia Walsh, both, okay. Cynthia, you're precinct three, George is precinct two now, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you both. Okay, by voice, phone only, all those in favor of dismissing Article eighteen and nineteen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the moderator declares it's a vote. Thank you both. Thank you all, I should say. Okay, now we, please go to page twenty-five, and midway through is Article twenty. Okay, Clean Streets Bylaw. Okay, so this, if everybody watches the process this evening, you can take notes, feel free to take notes tonight. Hang on a second, one. I'm going to ask for the motion from Steve Cavy to put this on the floor, as written in the book. Mr. Cavy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Stoughton general bylaws as printed in the warrant for Article twenty.
Okay, one second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's seconded? Bob Cohen, precinct five. I understand it's amended motion, I recognize Deborah Roberts for that amended motion.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I would like to amend the motion to include language under Section one sixty-two to twenty-one, Clean Streets and Sidewalks, it's in red. It reads, rubbish and solid waste shall include all commercial, industrial, individual, or bulky items as defined by Mass General Laws, Chapter one eleven and twenty-one E, one oh five CMR four-ten, or three-ten CMR, such as, but not limited to, household rubbish, construction debris, bulky items, white goods, et cetera, but shall not include any naturally occurring yard debris and/or snow or ice. In addition, on the next page, under Section one sixty-two dash twenty-two, under compliance with rubbish or solid waste collection, the only change is, what's in red, it changes the time from seven PM to three PM.
Okay, that amended motion's been made, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Quigley, thank you. Okay, now we're going to debate, excuse me for mispronouncing that word, we're going to debate accepting the amended motion. Okay? Actually, I'm sorry, let me back up, we should get the, I jumped over ahead a little bit, we didn't get any standing committee reports, I need to get those. Alright, just so I won't add more confusion to the thing. Finance Committee, could you give me a report, please?
Finance Committee voted zero to fourteen to accept and recommend the town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Municipal Regulations voted six to zero to refer to special town meeting. Committee members had reservations on time restraints of this article. Okay, in the future, just to make a note here, when I put the main, when I ask for the main motion from the book to be on the floor, that's when I will ask for the standing committee reports. That really goes with the main motion, just to be clear. But now we're going to discuss the amended motion, to accept the amended motion. Okay? One second.
Want Fox, you had your hand raised, did you have a question?
Did you have a question regarding process? Use the microphone, please, introduce yourself. Is a, I assume it's a point of order?
Yes, point of order. Juan Fox, precinct one. Article nineteen, are we bypassing that?
By voice vote, we dismissed it.
We dismissed it last time?
Eighteen, just until this evening, eighteen and nineteen.
No, it was, I thought it was just eighteen you were discussing.
No, I said eighteen and nineteen.
I didn't hear nineteen mentioned.
Yeah, I clearly said eighteen and nineteen.
Okay.
Yeah, by voice vote. Mr. Peter Banus, did you have a question? I saw, I thought I saw your hand raised. Thank you. Mr. Bob Cohen, you have a point of order?
Are we discussing the article now?
Okay.
The amendment to the article?
Just the amendment.
Why did we go from seven PM to three PM? People that work come home sometimes six, seven, eight o'clock at night.
No, it says we go earlier.
No, you have to... Deborah, would you like to just clarify that? Oh, Ma? Ma, okay, hang on a minute.
Mark, do we need a presentation?
Not yet.
Or an attorney winner address that?
Well, let me do this, we're just talking about that time change and the process of accepting the amendment. Ma, could you just kind of briefly just say why it went to three PM?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That timeframe went to three PM due to a lot of public comment about seven PM being just too late. Gives you a little more flexibility going to three PM. There was several standing committee meetings and the Finance Committee meeting, there was a common theme, a lot of people made phone calls to us, it needed a little more flexibility. One example was seniors at nighttime, they're in time changes, you know, they, going out at nighttime when it's dark is scary and unsafe to them, and we took that to heart and changed it to three PM. That was one of the reasons why we thought that was a good idea.
Okay, Janice, then Rebecca. Please identify yourself, this is just on accepting the amendment.
Oh, alright.
I have a point of order.
Point of order, go ahead, Rebecca.
Becca Marks in precinct seven and Chair of Charter Review, just point of order, should this have gone to the Charter Review?
No, this is not Charter, this is a bylaw.
Because it's a bylaw?
Just a bylaw, like, I'm going to refer to our town council. It'd be easier. Be easier for me, since, you know...
Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker, this is a proposed amendment to your general bylaws, the code of the Town of Stoughton. It has nothing to do with the Charter whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for points of order? Seeing none, Janice, identify yourself, please.
Janice Schneider, precinct six. I did not see any notes from the Finance Committee, how did you come to zero to twelve?
Okay, Mr. Anokian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted zero fourteen, the motion failed in this. What was the reason why it was voted that way?
Yes, what's the reason?
There was a lot of discussion about the time, and it was mostly that, there was a lot of discussion on the timeframe, and for the bulk of it, that was the issue. A lot of it was timeframe based because it was a concern about the possibility of trying to bring trash out after seven o'clock, in the winter, it'd be dark, icy conditions, a lot of discussion along those lines. And there was also some discussion on the fees, it shouldn't, people shouldn't be fined if they brought it out, you know, early because of safety reasons, that sort of thing.
But if, okay, I...
That was the bulk of the discussion.
It was purely for the timing, not for the concept around the rest of the article.
It was most, most of the discussion was based on time, there was a lot of resistance to approve something that would limit the time that people couldn't bring it out till after seven.
So they could bring it up anytime after three PM.
We never discussed that, that was never brought to the Finance Committee.
So you didn't see the amended motion?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Laurie, please identify yourself to the meeting.
David Laurie, precinct six, thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. I just want to make sure what we're voting for is going to be basically taking away the penalties for anybody who has yard debris, snow or ice, and it's not going to penalize people if they put out their trash after three o'clock instead of seven. So I just want to make sure that that's what we're voting, those two changes. So, in other words, it's to take away the penalty of those two things, right?
Mr. Winner, go ahead.
Moderator, if I may, through you to the speaker, that's accurate, so there's two things happening here. One is it's expanding the window when rubbish can be put out, so it's making it a more generous, a larger window. So if your trash is collected at, let's say Tuesday, you have, you can't bring it out before three PM the day before, and you can't leave it any longer than seven PM the day of, so it makes that window larger. With respect to the definition, a question arose about what was included, in terms of rubbish, waste, solid waste, you know, what was a violation? And so what we did is just incorporate the statutory and regulatory definitions so that it was clear that normal accumulations, leaf, yard clippings, things like that, snow, ice, that are not part of the solid waste and rubbish collection program on any level, wouldn't be included.
Yeah.
And the normal things that you would expect to find people leaving out for collection, whether we collect them or not, but those normal items, those are the things we're talking about.
Yeah, so, just to confirm, is, the reason I'm asking these things, Mr. Moderator, is just so that the body knows that you could be for the changes and be consistent if you're against the main motion altogether. It's very consistent, you're not, it's not a contradiction to be for something and against the main motion. That was why I wanted to bring that up.
That's correct.
Okay, Joanna, come forward, please identify yourself to the body.
Joanna Rosenblatt, precinct seven. With all due respect to Vaughn, the way I remember it at the meeting was, one of the members even went into a whole dissertation about government overreach, and I thought that was equally as, equally an issue as it was for the timing. So I just wanted to make that clear, that I thought it was government overreach was one of the things I didn't want to support this for.
Would anybody like to respond to that?
Would you like me to respond to that, Mr. Moderator?
One minute, please. Ma, oh, you want, okay, I'm just, go ahead, Mr. Anokian.
Yes, that's true, there was discussion on government overreach, but in my recollection, the bulk of the discussion was based on time, but that is correct, there was discussion in regards to government overreach, that is true.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Lisa, come forward, please state your name and precinct number.
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. I just want to ask, am I supposed to be asking a question, or can I just state?
Well, this is pretty much debating whether we accept the amended motion.
Okay, so I'm just going to iterate, reiterate that my concern here is overreach of government. Somebody could throw stuff on somebody's lawn and they're going to get charged for it, and they would have no idea how that trash got on their yard. I am totally against this article, thank you.
Okay, but this is just to accept the couple of points of the amendment. That's all it is. I mean, just for clarification, trying to, I tried as moderator, make this as simple as possible, the pieces of this motion in red are the only thing that changed. So it's, my understanding, to be transparent to everybody, is the definition of rubbish and went from seven PM to three PM. That's all we need to accept if you, if this body wants to accept this amendment. Then we go on to debate the actual amended motion. Alright, go ahead, Mr. Fox, identify yourself.
Juan Fox, precinct one. Yes, I'm speaking about the change.
Sure.
I'm glad to see that they are going to not have you scrape off every bit of ice and piece, and leaf off your sidewalk in front of your house, which would be very hard to do. But one thing, I don't know what this says in the Mass General Laws, but so far as I'm seeing here, that if so much as a piece of paper that blows and ends up on the sidewalk, or a can, or somebody throws, you know, something as they're walking by, then I would be responsible by getting a fine for removing that, meaning that I'd have to be policing my sidewalk frequently to make sure that wouldn't happen. Now, it sounds ridiculous, but it is, it is possible, and the law does not prevent that from happening. So, I'm asking, is that true? Is that, a little, a little piece of paper, does not, doesn't that come under this new, this new paragraph put in?
Mark Tisdale, would you like to answer that, please?
Thank you. It's a good question, Juan, and we've had that question a few times, I mean, if somebody throws a coffee cup or a cigarette butt in your front yard, are we going to go over there and find you? The long story short is, this fine section here, and I'll get to the main point here, Bob, in a second, is in there just to give us teeth on the point zero one percent of people who are the big problem people in town. There are some people who give, don't give anything about throwing trash in their front yard. We literally had one this week and last week, they are dumping twenty bags of trash in their front lawn, and it may be an area you're familiar with, up the street a little bit, dumping trash in their front lawn, and there's no repercussions for somebody like that. They just keep on doing it, and doing it, and doing it. So, it's not for ninety-nine point nine percent of the people in town, it's for these, these people that are the repeat offenders that just keep on doing it, and doing it, and doing it. We don't have the time or resources, or staff, nor do we want to, go and fine people for things like that. That's not right, it's not the right thing to do at all. As long as I'm here, it's not what we're going to do. To be honest with you, the fine is the last call in anything we do, there's so many bylaws with fines, as long as I've been here, I can probably count on one hand how many times I get to the fine part. You've got to be really, really bad, and a repeat offender for you to get a fine, but for those really, really bad people, we need some teeth, or it's just going to get worse and worse.
Okay, and my second question is, was warnings considered in the fine process if they find somebody who's...
Mr. Fox, this is not, right now, this is not debating the actual...
I thought these were questions.
Well, this is only on accepting these couple of changes to the motion, that's all it is.
Okay, right, I see what you're talking about.
We'll get back to your points a little bit later, just give me a little more time. Sandra Souza, identify yourself, please.
Okay, hello, Sandra Souza, precinct one. So, if we are just asking questions about the changes here, I think Mr. Winner said...
Winner?
That this would address the change in time and that there would be no fines, but I don't see anything in red stating that there's an elimination of fines if you put your trash out or take it in outside of the parameters of those times. So, if I were to read this, I would make the assumption that if I put it out before three PM or after seven, or take it in after seven PM, I could be fined. So, I don't see that change in there.
Alright, let me ask Mr. Winner to maybe further provide a little details on that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the speaker, let me just offer a clarification. The question that was asked, that I answered, was whether or not it would be a violation under this amendment if people put their trash out at, say, six or seven. And it would not be, so there wouldn't be a fine associated with that, because under this amendment, you're allowed to do it at three. And so that was why there would be no fine associated with that, because it's no longer a violation under this amendment, if it passes. Now, the fine structure for a violation of the bylaw itself still remains, this doesn't change that, it just change, changes what's a violation.
So if you did it before three, you could still be subject to via, being, a violation of this bylaw, because you're just changing from seven to three? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, if I could just add a clarification?
Certainly, Attorney, want to go ahead?
I just want to make sure I understand.
So, yes, that's accurate, but I wouldn't say you would be subject to a violation, you would be subject to the normal enforcement protocol that is implemented by Town Hall on any kind of violation situation, which includes a whole series of escalating steps.
Correct.
So, I didn't want to leave the misimpression that the first option employed by the town is to fine.
Correct.
There are, there is a protocol in effect, and this is what Mr. Tisdale was referring to earlier.
Right, as Mr. Tisdale, right. It's just, when there's a, when there's a bylaw or any kind of a law, there's, if there's a violation, in my mind, you don't, you don't make a law or a bylaw unless everybody is subject to it. So, you shouldn't just say, well, it's only the one percent of people that violate it all the time that should be subject to the fines. You know, we should all, it should be applied to all of us equally. So that's why I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Mr. Peter Murphy, please identify yourself, please.
Peter Murphy, precinct two. The three o'clock time, seeing that we're just talking about the changes here, the three o'clock time, how did that come about as opposed to making it noon time on that day? I mean, for example, I head north, I put my barrels up before I head north, my trash is picked up on Friday, I'm not going to wait till three o'clock. So why not twelve o'clock?
Would anybody be able to answer that? Ma, Ma, or Paul? And please identify yourself to the body.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Paul Jafu, Public Works. As the Assistant Town Manager has said, and I know we have a little presentation after we discuss this amended motion.
Yes.
This is, the intent of this is to stop the behavior of point zero one percent of the people out there. This is not, you are, you, if you were to call and said, and you probably wouldn't even have to call and say, I'm going to New Hampshire for the weekend, can I put it out at twelve o'clock? Of course we'll say yes.
But at noon time, the town shuts down at noon time, so there'll be no one there to take the call. Thank you.
Which... Which town?
Hey, I like those suspenders.
That's, that's not true.
Okay, hold on now.
The, the, that's, that's, that's not correct information, where the office shuts down at three-thirty on Friday. The office, yes, yep.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Okay, let's move on, next up is Elliot Hanson. Mr. Hanson, identify yourself to the body.
Elliot Hanson, precinct one. There may be a, just a clerical error here where it says, no longer than seven PM, I think that probably should have been no later... it says, uh, "No longer than 7:00 PM." I think that probably should have been, no, later than.
It no longer says, let me just clarify. It's, now it says 3:00 PM.
No, no, no.
Oh, the wording? Okay, I have, uh-
Excuse me. The, the wording after it, it says, "Prior to the day of collection,"
I understand now.
"And no longer than 7:00 PM." I think it should have been, no, later than 7:00 PM.
Can we have someone to clarify that? If anybody like to step up to the microphone here on this side? Semantics.
Just a clarification, I think.
Attorney Winner, could you just state what you just said?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker, your point's well taken. Uh, I think it's a semantic change, and probably grammatically, that's, that's a correction that can be made.
That's all I'm saying on, as far as I'm concerned.
And so duly noted.
Thank you. Um, what is out-of-cycle rubble, rubbish collection? Can you be a little bit more clear about that?
What was your question? I didn't understand your question, Elliot.
What is out-of-cycle rubbish collection?
Define that, okay. Okay, Paul?
Sure, I can answer that.
That's good.
So, say you called for a pickup for a dresser that you wanted, um, that you wanted to get rid of, it was scheduled, and we were gonna pick it up next Monday, but you had it out there Thursday, the week, the, in the previous week. That's out-of-cycle. Or, your trash is out on Tuesday, but your trash day isn't till Friday.
Okay, well, I could certainly understand about your, your furniture and all that stuff. The only thing that, I want a little niggling point about this thing, among others.
Just about these two changes now.
I'm sorry?
You're just making points on these two changes, right?
Those, those, and no more speaking on this?
Well, just on the changes, that's all I, we can come back and debate this as long as everybody wants to, but just wanna discuss and debate the two changes, whether we accept this amended motion. Go ahead, Peter, please identify yourself.
Peter Vanis, Precinct Two. I would like to see if we can move along. It appears the discussion by the Chairman of the Finance Committee, the main focus was on the time, all right? The out-of-cycle thing, you put it out on the wrong day. One of the problems that we have here is, we, we know that, that the thing about common sense, it's not that common, okay? All they're, all they're asking is to allow people to put their rubbish out so the older folks don't have to put it out at 7:00 at night, okay? That's, that's the way I interpret it. Me, and I'm not, I'm not the legal counsel, okay? But then that we talked about government overreach. All they're trying to do is enforce the rules that this town has been the dumping ground. If you went to any of the hearings for this, there was a ton of input by the citizens. The guy in South Street said that they come from Brockton, dump the stuff on the side of the road, we've been picking it up forever. So, I am yawned. But, 'cause I get emotional, all right? All we're doing is, let's talk about the time, and then on the debate thing, is there in fact, gentlemen, there is a compliance officer, Mr. Carter said-
Well, we, we can get into all that.
That's debate, okay.
Debate, during the debate.
Let the people put their rubbish out in the street. Thank you.
All I'm asking is, if this body wants to accept the, the motion as amended with these two red line statements, or it went from 7:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and the stuff in the red here. That's all I'm asking. If we accept it, I'm not telling you what to do, but if you prefer to accept it, then we can debate the whole article. Carolyn, can you identify yourself, please?
Hi, Carolyn Campbell, Precinct Four. Can we move the question? I'd like to move the question on this amendment.
Sounds good to me. I'll accept that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by George Snolinski. Now, we need a two-thirds vote. The, move, move, whoa, two-thirds. It's two-thirds. Yeah, it's two-thirds. Don't ever doubt the moderator, George, come on. Most of the time, I'm correct. Most of the time, I'm not correct, but, all right, okay. This is to cut off debate. All those in favor by voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose. Okay, now we accepted the amended motion. Uh, I should say, that's to cut off debate. My bad, see? As I said before, sometimes I'm good, sometimes I'm not so good. All right, now we're gonna vote. Is that correct?
No.
This is just to accept the amendment, okay? That's all we're doing, okay? So, please pick up your clickers, vote one, two, or three to accept the paperwork up there as, as an amended motion. What do we got here? Okay. That motion is, passes, 96 yes, 14 no, and zero abstentions. Now, we're back to the main motion. It's called Main Motion As Amended, okay? It should appear on the screen. Main Motion As Amended. Just give us a moment. Sure, we just need a moment. Your clicker not working? Okay, we just need a moment to replace a clicker. Takes a moment. So, read up on the, uh, your paperwork there. Sure, sure, okay, sounds good. Are we good? Okay, now the motion, the main motion as amended is on the screen. Now, we're gonna go back to the process, all right? I'm gonna ask for the presentation. Mr. Mark Tisdale, when you're ready, please proceed.
Thank you, Bob. How many minutes do I get?
10 minutes.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Well, 9.7 right now.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody. Mark Tisdale. Um, let me just go through a little presentation. Obviously, there's some questions that need to be answered. A lot of the topics you brought up will be in my presentation that I have right now. This bylaw is adopted to promote the beautification of the town, town's properties, streets, and sidewalks, to prevent unnecessary dumping and accumulation of rubbish and solid waste on town streets, sidewalks, and property, to promote housing and community sanitation, and to promote the town of Stone's attractiveness to existing and future residential businesses. Some key points that I'm pulling out of the, the bylaw. First of all, the select board is, is the, is acting as the street commission, commissioners on this. They're the enforcing authority. Point two, the bylaw requires no dumping of trash on town-owned properties or public areas. So, on town-owned parcels of land, otherwise known as illegal dumping, some people refer to that as that. Requires no dumping of trash on town streets. So, within the towns, right away, within their streets. Requires commercial establishments to maintain trash and authorize trash receptacles on their own property. Currently, Board of Health actually permits dumpsters and things of that nature already. Regulates the time period of when rubbish and solid waste can be left at the curb. The amended motion allows the timeframe to be from 3:00 PM the day before pickup, and no longer than 7:00 PM the day of collection. If there is a unique situation, um, DPW, give DPW a call. You know you're on vacation, there's, you got a doctor's appointment, something's going on, that they are human beings over there, they will allow you to put it out at a different time. We know this is being recorded, we're speaking, so you can always clip this if we're, if we're wrong, and, and call us out. Establishes an out-of-cycle collection fees for DPW to pick up trash. Again, this bylaw only applies to town properties, streets, sidewalks, and not private property. If somebody's coming in and just taking piles of trash and dumping it in your backyard, this is not this, this policy. This is for town-owned streets and properties. That's actually a civil issue. Uh, that's a criminal offense for somebody to be dumping trash on your property that's not yours. That's where we call the police department. That's already enforceable. There's already state laws that allow that to happen. Uh, one key point that came up, a lot of phone calls over, since we presented this to several boards and committees and things of that nature, is the enforcement procedures. These enforcement procedures that I'm about to discuss are actually procedures already in place for other things, such as zoning enforcement. We're just applying them to rubbish. And I'm gonna, I'm going to really emphasize this, and those of you who know, who know me, hopefully you, you trust me, that we don't fine people. Uh, that's the last resort. Um, we literally like to go through and resolve the issue and not fine. That is the number one thing. Pull whatever reports you can from departments, especially underneath my control, and fines are very seldom issued. Um, it's really just for the repeat offenders. So, from October 1st, when the solid waste program was implemented, to about March, if this, if this article gets approved, this bylaw, the Attorney General will approve, will approve this. We'll call it March. For about five months, we're calling this the education portion of the, of the year, right? People are violating the policies because they don't know about the, the trash bylaw right now. They just don't know about it. So, our code enforcement officer goes out there and educates people consistently. Since this policy's been in place, there's been 220 properties in noncompliance, and there's only been six repeat offenders. Only six repeat offenders. So, that percentage I was telling you is, um, pretty accurate. It may not be .01%, but there's six repeat offenders. Uh, every week, the numbers have dropped down to complaints, 56, 52, 43, 28, 25, and 12. So, the numbers are going down. People are getting educated on this program, and it's becoming less and less of an issue. Um, the steps of code enforcement for this. DPW workers will issue violation stickers as the first warning, first notification, if you want to call that, for noncompliance. So, they'll stick it on the Bureau. A step two, DPW worker calls into DPW, solid waste admin, to notify of the violation, and then DPW admin notifies the code enforcement manager of the address of the violation. Step three, the code enforcement officer will visit the site and attempt to educate the person, or provide a door hanger with solid waste program details, the flyer you're all familiar with, I, I think. If no one is home, the DPW admin will attempt to reach the property owner by phone. At that point, the property owner has 24 hours to resolve the file, violation. We call that the first official warning. If the violation is not resolved, DPW will pick up the items, and code enforcement will visit the site again to educate the homeowner on the program details once again, verbally or with the door hanger. Um, a, a letter stating that, that there is a violation, noting that a fine letter will be issued for the next violation will be issued. Not for that one, for the next one. Uh, that's considered the second warning. Uh, but remember, you got this violation sticker initially, so really, there's been four levels of, of warning so far. Then, the final warning, a fine letter for out-of-cycle collection fees is issued for the first offense. Each subsequent offense, a new fine letter will be issued. So, you don't start over again, it just keeps on going. Again, this is for those repeat offenders. Those are, there's ones that we've been dealing with this week. It's, it's just disgusting and horrible. I can't even describe it to you. They just keep on throwing trash in their front yard. And we, but every bylaw I've ever seen is written, you know, legally, it's scary sometimes, but the town does need a little bit of teeth sometimes for those people who just don't care about the rules at all. It's not about coffee cups or cigarette butts in your front yard. We don't have the time, effort, or care about that kind of stuff. We care about the bigger picture stuff. And, uh, for now, I would say that's about all I got to mention. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, or Paul, the DPW Director, or our Town Council, Brian Winner. Thank you.
Yes, Attorney Winner, go ahead. You'd like to make a couple of brief comments?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the meeting. And I'm speaking as counsel. I'm, I'm not a policymaker or an advocate, but I just wanted to highlight, uh, what I think is an important point here. As you'll recall, the select board went through a, a lengthy and deliberate and thoughtful process to revise and establish new, um, water rates, new sewer rates, um, and new, um, solid waste and rubbish collection programs. For water and sewer, we have statutory law, well-established statutory law, that tells us how we can enforce those things. For rubbish collection, we don't. We have a statute that does not provide any guidance, um, or teeth, in terms of how the municipality can enforce its policies and regulations for solid waste and rubbish collection, which means you need a bylaw. And so this is to fill a gap. Um, it, it provides the enforcement mechanism and the administration mechanism that state law doesn't have. Um, and so I wanted to make that abundantly clear, that we can do things for water and sewer, but we can't do them for trash, because the enforcement doesn't exist under state law. This would give the town the tools it needs to enforce trash collection and solid waste collection the same way it does if people aren't paying their water bills, people aren't paying sewers, so on and so forth. Um, so this closes that gap. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Attorney Winner. All right, now, we had our presentation, and now it's time for technical questions. Whoever has any technical questions, please, uh, get in queue here, behind the microphones, and I'll recognize you as we go forward. Mr. Juan Fox, please state your name and precinct number.
Juan Fox, Precinct One. Okay, my question is, uh, based on what you said, that if somebody out of cycle throws a couple of bags of trash in front of my house, and I don't have to be there, or I can't see it, how would this be adjudicated so that I don't end up getting fined for putting out trash out of cycle?
Thank you, Juan, for that question. Again, somebody littering on your property is, is a criminal offense. That would go through the police department.
To extend on this question, um, but if I don't know it's there, then they, then the enforcement officer may think that I'm, I actually threw it out there. Uh, going into speaking about, uh, warnings, uh, how would that be, that warning be issued to me, um, having that trash there? Would it be, you spoke about warnings, would that warning also include a couple of bags of regular trash?
Uh, great question again. So, essentially, our code enforcement ma, uh, code enforcement manager, Matt, would come to your, come to your, your house, knock on your door. If you're not there, he'll leave you a door hanger, um, notify you that you had a violation. At that point, I would think you'd be like, "Hey, I didn't have a violation." Like, I, I left my trash out the other day. How did that trash get there? And then there's a discussion that occurs. And obviously, at that point, we realize that it's not your trash, it's somebody else's trash, and a complaint needs to be filed with the police department.
Okay, so that, that is the buffer that, uh, to provide to residents in those situations where things out of their control have happened in front of their home.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, legal dumping of trash on somebody's pri, private property is a criminal offense.
Uh, and also, uh, second question is, back to that loose pieces of paper. Uh, I live on a street where there's a lot of, you know, things blowing down the street, and people walking by and throwing their trash out the window. And, um, is there any enforcement of those kind of things, uh, and on the street? So, that you, accumulation of a, a few bottles and some paper, um, how would the town react to that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Moderator, I can answer that. Um, if there's trash in the roadway, or on the sidewalk, and we don't know how it got there, just like we do now, we'll go and get it, and we'll pick it up and dispose it. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, but in regards to my, my responsibility for it, would I be considered, you know, responsible for tho, that, those pieces of paper, or, or bottles or something that appear on the sidewalk in front of my house?
Uh, through you, Mr. Moderator. No one will be held responsible until an initial discussion is had, and we work it out that way, first and foremost. And if it was yours, and you, and you didn't comply, well, then you would have your first violation, which is a first warning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lenehan, please identify yourself, please.
Uh, John Lenehan, Precinct One. I'm a little confused about the part that says, uh, "And no longer than 7:00 PM," or "No later than 7:00 PM," whatever. If the trash was collected that day, how could it still be there? Are we talking about a trash barrel? Well, that's not trash. It's a tool. No, sometimes I don't come home before 7:00 and get my barrels in, but it's not trash.
So, Mr. Moderator, I, I believe the intent wa, was- So, Mr. Moderator, I believe the intent was, again, the intent, and I believe, as a previous speaker said, the common sense. I can promise you, no one's going to be fined if an empty trash barrel is out there at 7:01 PM. Yeah, don't let it get to 7:03, though.
Okay, I just want to say, I know this isn't pro con, but I'll save you from me getting up here again. I really support this, and, but I want everybody to keep in mind that the reality is, we live with coyotes and everything else now, so if you can put them out the morning of for trash pickup, we're all much better off, and there'll be less human-animal conflict.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lenehan. Attorney Winner would like a couple of comments?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous questioner. I just wanted to add a clarification. It's not picking it up? Okay. Some things are put out for collection that we are prohibited by law from collecting, and so, they may remain after the collection comes by, because we can't pick them up. And so, under the Select Board's policy, it's a number five, there's a list of things that the state prohibits us from adding to the waste collection stream.
Thank you.
And so, that's, that's the answer.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sandra Souza? Somebody, Sandra, we're going to take you next. Okay. Go ahead, Sandra. Identify yourself, please.
Sandra Souza, precinct one. The, you know, often if you throw, you cast, you cast out a really wide net, you end up catching things inadvertently you didn't plan on. So, I guess, similar to other speakers, I'm concerned about, especially that the larger section that was included with chapter 111, CMR 410. I read through literally all of that to make sure I understood what was included. I don't know if other folks did. It's pretty comprehensive. So, I think Mr. Fox alluded to some of those things, and I just don't want to be caught up in that net and find that, you know, I've got a little sticker on my door, or whatever the case may be, because I somehow, you know, got caught up in something. But I'm not sure how, and I know you have this process of those three warnings or whatever, but I frankly don't want to have to be dealing with that kind of nonsense, you know, going down and explaining why, you know, there was some situation or whatever. And, and then, so I don't know.
Sandra, is there a question?
Yeah, the question is, I don't know how they're going to deal with that, because it is a very wide, there's a lot in those two, the CMR and the, and the MGL 111. And then, the time. I really would like to know how you came about picking that timeframe, and I know you explained why you changed it to 3:00 PM, but I still think it's a little bit restrictive because of, for a lot of reasons. I'll speak to that, you know, when we have our pro con debate, but I'm just curious as to why, you know, you picked that timeframe, because 7:00 PM, as somebody else said, they're not even home from work, you know, and calling for a doctor's appointment, I mean, calling the DPW every time you have a, an event seems to me like it's going to be a lot of phone calls.
Can anybody answer that? Paul?
Answer that comment?
Well, respond.
The question, like, how did you come up with that timeframe? Like, what was the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, rather than don't keep your trash out, put your trash out sooner than the day before and take it in no later than the day after.
The question is, how'd you come up with 3:00 PM?
Yeah, how'd you come up with that timeframe? Like, 7:00 to 7:00, or now, 3:00 to 7:00?
Okay, we'll try to explain that.
Yeah, I believe that the reasoning behind the 3:00 PM was, no matter what time of year it is, 3:00 PM is still light, it's still light outside, because we did, as Mr. Tisdale mentioned, get a lot of phone calls and concerns about people having to bring their barrels or their bags out to the side of road after dark. So, I don't know if there was really much discussion. I think we just said, well, 3:00 PM sounds like a good time, because it's still light out all year long.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Next up, Mr. Billow, is it? Please identify yourself.
Thank you, Dave Billow, precinct four. Just because there's two different fees for rubbish and solid waste, I didn't see a definition of either of those, just wondering, what's the difference between the two?
Anybody clarify that? Mark? Or Paul? Go ahead, Paul.
Yes. Ah, yes. So, rubbish is your household rubbish that goes in the bag? And solid waste would be the special delivery, I'm sorry, or special pickups?
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder, but you don't have to get too close to the mic. I think suggestion is maybe two to three inches away from it, just speak a little louder. That way, they, it doesn't get too static on the, or staticky on the TV later on. All right, next up, I have Lisa, you're after a few other people. David Walsh, please identify yourself, please.
David Walsh, precinct three. Am I the right distance at this point, Bob, or? Okay.
Yep, she gave you the thumbs up, David.
Okay, great. Question about commercial property, right? Will this address, I see you shaking your head, Mark, you know where I'm going, right? There's commercial properties in town that dump, you know, on their property but not into a dumpster and overflow. Will this bylaw address that issue?
So, commercial properties that dump on their property and cause public nuisances?
That's correct. Like mattresses that don't get disposed of properly.
Yes, I, boy, we're on the same wavelength. I seem to know what property you're talking about.
Yes.
Those properties would fall under the Board of Health. I think we have the chairman here tonight. We can enforce that kind of situation through the Board of Health. That's on private property, remember? If it's on the town streets or in town private property, that's where this comes into play. Again, commercial establishments have to have all their rubbish in containers such as dumpsters that are permitted through the Board of Health.
Which they don't at this point, right? I mean, you know the property you're referring to. They don't, right? So, this bylaw wouldn't address that, but the Board of Health can address?
No, this bylaw does address if it's not in dumpsters, on commercial establishments.
Ah, okay, so, if they're dumping, and it's not in a dumpster, this bylaw, they can use that to find them? Okay, thank you, that was my question.
Thank you, Dave. Next up, gentleman in the green sweater, oh, please identify yourself.
Kevin Monahan, precinct three. If you could clarify, if I have, let's say, a dresser that's in good shape and I no longer want it, would I still be able to put it out on the side of the road with a free sign on it, or is that prohibited?
Go ahead, Paul.
A lot of good questions out here tonight. So, that happens. We, it's only going to, it's only going to last so long before you get a knock at the door, and then we'll have a discussion again.
Okay. And the other part is, does this pertain to things like election signs, or tree service signs, or those kind of placards that get put on lawns?
My suggestion was, would be just to make that, make sure those signs are not in the public way. And on your property.
Okay, thank you.
Next gentleman, I don't know your name, sir. Please identify yourself and precinct number.
Stephen Phillips, precinct one. I, I'm in agreement with this. However, I do have a question. There are a lot of spots in Spotten around precinct one that are private ways, and a lot of people put their trash and rubbish and solids on the public spaces as well as on private property, and the trash guys come by and pick it up. Somebody said earlier about a wide net. I foresee, because you don't know who's on the private way, and they do leave their dressers out as well, will the person's property where they leave this be the one that gets the notice of the knock?
I would, that's a good question. I would refer that to our town council, to be honest with you.
Mr. Town Council?
And forgive me, but I want to make sure I understand your question. Can you restate it?
Sure. There are private ways in precinct one, and probably in all the other precincts. So, the trash isn't picked up on the private ways. You have to bring your trash down, and it's usually in front of somebody's property or between the city and private property where they lay this trash. It's a whole bunch of different types of trash. And what can get picked up gets picked up, but what doesn't is still there. So, the person whose property this is put upon may get the knock, even though it's not their trash.
So, to the extent that it's being left, you know, in a public right-of-way for collection, but it's the trash that belongs to people along that private way, is that your question?
Yes.
And so, it's the person at the end of the road that's going to bear the burden, potentially?
So far, yes.
Okay. So, I understand your question, and thank you for clarifying that. So, this is where the protocol comes into place, and this is why, and I won't speak, you know, on behalf of each of the individuals that do this, but I can explain the mechanics of the protocol. And this is why there's an education process, a warning process, an investigation process, so that we're not giving notices and issuing fines to the wrong people. And so, I know with all of these cases that I've been involved in, we go through a process to identify who the responsible parties are. And as you know, when it's on a private way, there's no municipal interest, right? There's no public layout. There's no sidewalk. The town doesn't own anything. And so, if it happened entirely on the private way, we wouldn't have any jurisdiction in any event. And so, when it's brought up to the public way, and we have no way of knowing where it came from, we're going to first contact the owners of the butters along the private way. We're going to speak to the people that were the owners or the people present at the property where this rubbish or solid waste were found, and we're going to begin a little bit of an investigation. And this is where Mr. Foon and Mr. Tisdale were referring to their, their internal process of having a conversation, providing information, and oftentimes, that's going to either identify the responsible people in and of itself, or it'll lead us to the next phone call and the next knock on the door, and so on and so forth. Another part of that as well is, this is intended primarily to address habitual offenders, not one-offs necessarily. And so, if this is something that happens once in a great while, and it's corrected, you know, with a phone call, a drop by, and a conversation, then this whole process isn't even going to be initiated, because it's problem solved. If it's habitual, well, then more resources would be put into it to find out what's really going on, and why is there trash and illegal dumping on a public street and a public sidewalk.
Point of information, please.
One second, please. Did you have another question, sir?
I was just going to point out, I wouldn't call it illegal dumping. They have to bring it up. It's just what happens when it's left there.
And I use that term because we don't know what it is yet, and so, people leave all kinds of things in all kinds of places, and I understand your question to me, that this is household rubbish and things that people are intending to lawfully dispose of through rubbish collection, but it's not always that. And so, we're going to look at that and determine whether or not it's hazardous material, is it solid waste, is it a CRT TV, is it other things that we can't pick up, and so on and so forth. So, that's the investigation process. I'm not imputing any, you know, ill motives on anybody. I'm just saying, that's part of the things that we look into to see what impact is this having on municipal property.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Bob Cohen, I recognize you for a point of order.
Point of order is, the people in those private ways get billed every month or every quarter for rubbish pickup. Water. Water. They're entitled to have rubbish picked up, too. If they're not, I mean, we're making a mountain out of a molehill. If it's a private way, this should have been addressed in this article. But as far as the private way, Mr. Winters, they're paying for this, and if they're not going to get it picked up, then where's the real problem here? We'll end up in court.
Okay, I don't know if I can get clarification on that.
That wasn't the question.
Well, he's saying private way.
It's if it's a violation. Do you want me to clarify that?
Could you clarify that, Attorney Winner?
And Mr. Moderator, back to the speaker, Mr. Cohen, we weren't talking about people who were compliant. If it's compliant placement for pickup, it'll get picked up in the usual course, just like anything. I think the question had to do with what happens if there's a violation, and people are putting it in out-of-cycle, you know, hours, and otherwise, not putting it out properly for collection. If it's there properly, it'll be collected in the usual course.
Mr. Moderator?
You have to use the microphone, Bob. Do you have another point of?
Is there some background? There's a lot of private ways in this town, and by right, the rubbish trucks can't go down these private ways, because we don't own the road. What do they do now to get their rubbish picked up? They're being charged for it. How does it get picked up now?
Okay, let's, let's just hold off on that. Well, it's not a point of order, Bob. Okay, I'm going to recognize Lisa Lyon for two questions. Can someone get her microphone working?
Hi, Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So, while I completely understand the intention here for the few repeat violators, the government is trying to capture this throughout the entire time. I'm sorry, the entire town. It is not considering Juan goes away for a week, he's got trash on his property, and then, to Mr. Winters' point, we're going to have an investigation. For all the resources being used to investigate where this went to, could we put those resources in another way to deal with these few repeat habitual violators, other than trying to involve more government, people having to come home from wherever they were and start making phone calls to their government to be cleared of a potential violation? That's my question.
Could anybody answer that for us?
Yeah, let me see if I understand the question. Can we put more resources elsewhere than trying to?
Cast a wide net to every citizen in this town who are law-abiding citizens and respectful of the public way as it is. This just sets the public up for being in a violation situation, which they may have no involvement in whatsoever, and have to engage with their government. Do you not see that as a problem?
Well, I think, again, let me just respond. That's more of a policy question. Maybe you should go before the Board of Selectmen and have them clarify their policy on this. But right now, we're just trying to debate the article before us, the motion before us.
Keep the article before us?
You're saying wide, you know, casting a widespread, a wide net. I mean.
For a few, admittedly here tonight, very few violators.
I don't know if they can answer that, because that's more of a policy question. If anybody can answer that, I would.
I, I, I guess I would try and answer it like this. If that were me, and I were on vacation, and I came home, and there were trash in my yard, I would call the police. Also, I guess it's, I'll, I'll answer a question with a question, is, if we don't have any enforcement for anyone, how are we supposed to stop the repeat offenders? That, and I, I'm sorry if I'm answering the question with a question, but I think that's something to think about.
That's valid. As Mr. Winters said, water and sewer, that's identifiable to a specific location. This situation is different, because it potentially puts it on, on other people that are not as easily identifiable.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
So, I, I think it's important to understand and really listen to what Mr. Tisdale said. If there are any infractions, first, there will be a knock at the door, a phone call, and then subsequent discussions, and then if it happens again, there'll be another warning, then again, another warning. You're not going to be fined if you come home from vacation and someone has a bag of trash on your lawn.
I'm talking about the involvement of the, I think I've made my point, but the government, me having to call to defend myself when there's nothing to defend, that's offensive. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, I might, thank you, Lisa. I think that's a policy decision by the Board of Selectmen. Here, they're just trying to implement trash pickup, or at least deal with the trash that is out there. Okay, I'm going to recognize Elliot Hanson.
Elliot Hanson, precinct one. Just a couple of quick things.
Many of the previous speakers were doing, brought up some very valid points. Remember the introduction of this in the suburban shop, but one of the items that was forbidden were pizza boxes? Is that going to be, are they still going to be persona non grata, pizza boxes?
Paul, if you can answer that.
They are not. They've, that has since been clarified. Pizza boxes without food or an abundance of grease are prohibited.
That helps them burn. And then one other question here. What is any other service? You've got out-of-cycle, out-of-cycle, solid waste, rubbish. What is any other service?
Go ahead, Paul.
Sure. That would be, say, you put something out that we don't take, maybe hazardous material, and we have to go there and remove it and find a legal way to remove and dispose of it.
So pepperoni may be hazardous material. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. Let's move on. Could you identify yourself, please?
Davina Owens, Precinct 4. Can I just get clarification on the fact that there is no jurisdiction over personal property? And the reason I ask, forgive me, I'm a words person, is that 162-21 states, "Every owner or occupant of private property shall maintain his or her property free of any accumulation of rubbish and/or solid waste." And it doesn't define property in this particular bylaw. It also includes the conjunction "and," "shall" prevent. So I look back, I see where are my verbs. Shall maintain and shall prevent such materials from escaping to any public or private property. So can I just get clarification as to whether, if, let's say, I decide to start throwing my garbage on my front lawn, whether it's garbage or construction materials or anything else that's defined by the CMR as rubbish? If I decide to put it on my front lawn, but it's on my private property, is that a violation?
Could we have that answered by anybody? Attorney Winter? Go ahead.
That is not an, Mr. Moderator, through you to the Speaker. That's not an issue addressed by this bylaw because this bylaw addresses the right-of-way and sidewalks. That is going to be an issue under the state sanitary code, which is something completely outside the scope of this bylaw.
Thank you. That's my first question. My second question is then hypothetical. If I'm someone who comes home after 7:00 PM every day, say I work a late shift and my garbage pickup is one of the last of the day, and I am habitually leaving my bins out because I'm not home to pick them up and bring them in, is that a violation?
Anybody answer that for us?
Every day.
Paul, go ahead.
I'll reiterate, no, we are not, certainly would not be chasing those people with empty barrels.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Dave Laurie, please rise, go to the microphones, take your name and your point of order, please.
David Laurie, Precinct 6. Mr. Moderator, the last, the last person, the previous speaker, mentioned 162-21. And I don't think that the town council addressed the exact question because it was almost like a two-part question. So I want to get to the first part of the question because at the very first line, it says, "Every owner or occupant of private property shall maintain his or her property free of any accumulation of rubbish and/or solid waste." Because the second part says "and shall." So in other words, this says that if you do something in your own private property, you're subject to the penalties of this article. It's a two-part question, and I don't think that the first part of her question was adequately answered because it says "and shall prevent." This says that if you better maintain your private property in a certain way that the town finds acceptable, or you're going to get a fine, or you're going to get a notice, or you're going to get an, you know, an investigation, and on and on and on. I just want to hear you explain the first part of her question.
Okay, Attorney Winter, through you, go ahead.
This brings us back to the amendment. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Speaker. So rubbish, solid waste, accumulation, unacceptable accumulation, that's all defined under Chapter 111 and the state sanitary code. So that's already state law. This is, if you will, a recitation of existing state law. It doesn't change anything. And so those terms are terms of art under the law. And so accumulation, fugitive trash, rubbish, solid waste, that's why this definition is significant because it pulls in those definitions under the state sanitary code, Chapter 111, which is the public health statutes. And so those are where you'll find the definitions of what's acceptable and what isn't. It's not up to the town because that's existing state law.
Thank you, Attorney Winter. Okay, next up, Mr. Zemanian, I believe you're next. Take your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Zemanian, Precinct 1. My first question is sort of a two-part. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Jafun has stated that kind of if you were to put something out that was free, bureau, I think is what the person said, in good condition, would that violate or would that be allowable? His answer was somewhat sketchy in the same piece of it as the barrel removal or trash that wasn't picked up prior to 7:00 PM. I just would like a yes or no on those two things because according to this bylaw, it removes my right to put out free items prior to trash pickup. And if I don't get home before 7:00, technically, I'm in violation of this. So I just want yes or nos on those two things, please.
Could anybody answer that for him? Paul?
Sure. I understand you want a yes or no. What's the exact question again?
If I put a free item out, which many people in this town do do that, am I in violation of this bylaw? Because according to the language, it says it is, but you were unclear in your answer. So I just want a clarity on that, please.
Yes, you're in violation, and we'll start a discussion.
Yep.
But you will not be fined in the immediate.
Understood that. Yep, you know, I understand the process. We've gone over that already. The second piece was the barrel or waste that wasn't picked up, wasn't allowed to be picked up, we'll say. If I don't bring it in by 7:00 PM, I am in violation of this, correct?
I believe that's what it says.
Yes, okay. Thank you for that. My second question is, a lot of what we're talking about falls onto people who just put excess amounts of junk out on their sidewalk, renters that move out, things like that. Right now, bylaw, what can the town do to the owner if things like what Mr. Tisdale brought up earlier on Pleasant Street happens? How does that currently get dealt with? Through you, to whomever, whichever gentleman could answer.
Paul, if you'd like to take that.
Sure, I'll try. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Paul. Yep, we hear you.
Yeah. The answer, as I know, is nothing. That's why we're here tonight.
So if somebody loads their sidewalk, a renter, we'll just say for the sake of ease here, if a renter puts a bunch of stuff out, the owner doesn't know about it at the time, currently, the Board of Health has no jurisdiction to do anything about that because I think I heard earlier that they would have something to do with that. Can you help me understand the conflict?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
I do not know the answer to any Board of Health regulations regarding that stuff.
Is there somebody who could answer that?
Mr. Winter? Would you be kind enough to answer that for us?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And so I'm not going to address the Board of Health component of this because I believe there's someone else probably in a better position to do so here tonight. But with respect to, you know, public streets and sidewalks as distinguished from private property and things that the sanitary code really applies to, which are dwelling units, our options as a community are very limited right now because there are enforcement tools, but they're very extreme enforcement tools. So if people dump or encroach or leave materials on public property illegally, my options as town council, if I'm instructed to take action, are to go to district court or superior court and file a lawsuit or seek a criminal complaint to issue against that violator. So that's using a hammer. And it's, if that's the only tool we have, then we don't have enough discretion and enough variety to handle all the other situations. And so sort of the nuclear option is really not the one that I want, being the only one in my toolbox.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, counsel, for answering that. There is somebody else in this room, and I know that. It's the same question, Mr. Moderator. I would like to hear from the person, if they're willing, to talk about it. What does the Board of Health do in these situations?
Is the Board of Health?
And I see the gentleman's hand up right now. It's the same question, it's just an answer.
Can you repeat the question until I have the Board of Health representative answer that?
The answer is, the question is, what kind of, I understand counsel's legal approach to this. I'm wondering what happens now? How does this get handled now through the Board of Health?
How's it currently get handled without the bylaw?
Yes, yes.
Could you please rise and identify yourself and position on the Board of Health?
Precinct 1. The Board of Health has control over four-yard dumpsters or larger. They have to be registered with us. Anything smaller goes to the Building Department. I've been trying to get them coordinated together, but nothing's worked so far. But we have four yards. Smaller ones are under the Building Department.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So ultimately, the question's not answered because we don't have anybody from Building here, is that correct?
Do we? Mark, did you want to answer that?
I can answer this. Maybe a little assistance from Brian, but essentially, if it's on private property and you're dumping trash and it forms the basis of a violation under the state sanitary code that Brian referenced, such as a public nuisance, or a lot of times, that trash may have food in it, may have food in it, there may be rats that start coming into it and things like that. The Board of Health can enforce it. So the complaint, usually, there's a complaint that comes into the office, it's investigated, and then if we need to elevate that after going through all those series of steps to bring it to the actual Board of Health, that's what we do, and they vote on it and discuss it.
And that applies to people who put things on the sidewalk as well? Because I'm not talking about private property. We've defined that. I'm talking about if a renter puts a pile of stuff on the sidewalk area, on the town's right-of-way, I think is the best way to say it. That applies in that case as well, is that correct? Or?
Honestly, in my experience, we've always dealt with it on private property, that when that's when it goes to the Board of Health.
I think Attorney Winter has a couple of explanations.
You see, we're, I'm trying to define what we're doing now.
Mr. Moderator, maybe I can offer some clarification. And I just wanted to be deferential to the representative from the Board of Health before I gave an answer. So the state sanitary code, excuse me, doesn't apply to streets and ways. It applies to dwelling units, rental properties in particular. And so the street commissioners of the town, so and the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, have jurisdiction over town property, in particular streets and ways. And so if people are putting solid waste, rubbish, or even illegally dumping on any public property, a remedy is that of any other property owner. It's to file a lawsuit, it's to seek a criminal enforcement, and so it's not a Board of Health issue per se because the sanitary code just doesn't apply in that case. It's a property rights issue. And so, for example, if someone puts, I don't know, a sprinkler system, you know, right up into the right-of-way, or starts parking their personal vehicles and things like that, that's a property rights issue. And we do have enforcement tools that we exercise in appropriate situations to address those.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Mr. Ventresco, please identify yourself and ask your question.
Peter Ventresco, Precinct Gate. The follow-up on the question the gentleman had earlier about putting a piece of furniture out for somebody to come along and pick it up, that's kind of a fine line there. If you don't have a sidewalk, who's going to determine where the property line is? I could put a piece of furniture out there and it's on my side of the property line, but there's only three feet from the property line to the edge of the road. And a lot of times, you put furniture out there, young couples are always taking things, especially if it's kid's stuff. So you're saying if it's there more in the day or two, I'm going to get fined?
Would anybody be able to answer that, Paul?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Moderator. Not if it's on private property.
Yeah, well, somebody driving by might think it's on the five foot that the town owns, but there isn't five foot there, so it's true. So he could easy say, oh, that's on town property.
Go ahead, Mark. So your question's pretty much, how do we determine if it's on private or public property, correct?
Yeah.
So we have very.
I mean, it ain't a sidewalk. The sidewalk there, then you know it's, sidewalk's usually on the edge of the property line.
So usually, it's clear, but you're right, there are situations where it's gray, it's kind of like bordering the property line, or it's on the property. How do we determine where that is? We have very many tools available to us that can make that very easy for us now. The GIS that everybody is familiar with on the computer helps us with that. We have a lot of plans on the streets right-of-ways. We know where the property lines are generally for most of the right-of-ways in town.
All right. The other question is, you have to have it out. I always get my trash out the night before, but the latest you can be out there the next day is 7:00. So if you're there 3:00 past 7:00, you've got a trash cop driving around to make sure if it's not there, he's going to call a trash truck and say, don't pick it up if it's there because he wasn't out there before 7:00. But a lot of people, a lot of people, the trash truck comes pretty routine, say 10:00 in the morning, every week, every week. So they don't get it out there early in the morning. They get it out there like 9:00. So you're saying they can't do that no more because it didn't get out there at 7:00?
Okay, Paul can answer that for you.
Yep. Through you, Mr. Moderator. That happens now. It's happened for years. It will continue to happen. And the rules say the trash must be out at 7:00 in the morning on the day of your pickup.
Yeah, I understand that. But if you get it out there at 9:00 because you know the truck doesn't get there by 10:00, so he's, the trash is out an hour before the truck gets there. So you can't put the trash out at 9:00 when you know the truck's going to be there at 10:00?
Trash needs to be out at 7:00 AM.
Okay, thank you both. Jonna, you're up next. Please identify yourself, please.
Yes, Jonna Rosenblatt, Precinct 7. All I wanted to say is I'm really against this because I just feel it's.
It's a question. You have to have questions. Right now, we're still in the technical questions. So if you have a question, you have two questions if you want to ask a question.
I made a mistake.
That's okay. You can come back and pro and con debate. Not a problem. Next up, please identify yourself.
Dave Billow, Precinct 4. I think this is a clarification related to a question. So if someone puts a bureau out with a sign that says free, I think that's by definition not trash. It's more of like a.
Dave, were you up in line before?
I asked one question before.
Yeah, but you were in line, so.
All right.
You had your opportunity.
I'll rephrase it in the way of a.
I'm sorry. I can rule you out of order. No. Hey, once you're in line, you're in line. It's like, hey, you can't, can't get back in line. Otherwise, we'll never get done. Pardon me? Peter Murphy, you're up next.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. Move the question.
Well, we can't move it. We're in technical questions, but I don't see any more.
Can we move the question?
No. Is that a question? I get it. Thank you. Ha, 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 ha. All right. I'm going to say we're done with technical questions. Let's go on pro and con debate. Anybody in pro and con debate?
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. Move the question.
We haven't. I have to at least hear a couple of pro and con debate. Oh, is the body ready to move on?
Yeah, take a vote.
What? I'll ask for a voice vote. If you're ready to move on.
Yeah.
Well, actually, okay. I need a second on that.
Second.
Bob Cohen, second. Okay, if you want to cut off the debate by voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I think the ayes have it, declared by the moderator. All right. Thank you. All right, this is on the main motion as amended that's on the screen. Everybody has their clickers ready? Let's vote now. One, two, or three. Yes, no, or abstain. Simple majority. Simple majority. Okay, the amended motion, let me see if I get this right. The main motion, which is Article 20 as amended, passes. Seventy-four yes, thirty-seven no, zero abstentions. Thank you all. All right, let's move on. Okay, we're on Article, excuse me, page 28, Article 21. One second. Municipal charges lean. Mr. Lawrie, you have a point of order?
David Lawrie, Precinct 6. Through you. Mr. Moderator, there was a, the last screen showed the number of people who voted. I don't think it matches the quorum that we took. Wasn't it more than 95 people in the count?
Yep, yes.
People can come in afterwards.
Oh, okay, so...
At the time, we took the quorum was like 7:05, I believe.
And you're just saying that more people came?
It was 95. People can come in. It could. Okay, so 11. So I think the current count is 111, if I'm not mistaken. All right, again, we're on page 28, Article 21. Municipal charges lean. I'm going to ask for a motion by Vaughn Anoki and Chair of the ThinkCon. Vaughn? I believe, correct?
I got it. That the town vote to amend town of Stoughton general bylaws as printed in the warrant, except that section references be amended to read Sections 125-1 to 125-4.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Who's seconded it? Okay, Carolyn Campbell. Yep, she's seconded it. You got that? Okay, I need the Finance Committee report, please, Vaughn.
Finance Committee voted 11 to 3 to accept and recommend the town meeting Article 21.
I'll read the next couple. Intergovernmental Relations Committee voted 6 to 0 to recommend this article to town meeting. Municipal Regulations voted 6 to 0 to refer to special town meeting. And I ask Cynthia Walsh, Municipal Operations Committee?
Municipal Operations Committee voted 7 to 0, 7 yes, 0 no, to approve Article 21.
Yeah, there was a mistake, and I call it a typo in the book. Well, a couple of typos. Well, it's a few words. We just read the correct, and if you watched the public hearing, you would have seen it. If you appeared at the public hearing, you could have been there and discussed it. We can, we can bring it up a little later. Not to take all your time. We'll show it later. Stay after the meeting. We'll show it to you. Thank you. Yeah, we have the report here. Thank you for bringing that up, though. I appreciate that. All right, now, this is on Article 21. Okay, you're welcome. Presenter is Mark Tisdale. Mark? Are you presenting?
Yeah, I can present, sure.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Very simple. This article is for municipal charges lean. The purpose of establishing municipal charges lean is to provide the town with a cost-effective method of collecting certain unpaid charges or fees assessed against real property owners in town by placing a lien upon the real estate owned by the property owner. To simplify this, there's a lot of legal stuff in here that Brian can talk about. The only thing this has to do with, if you look at the last line in this motion, A on page 29, right on the 162-3, applicable charges, it applies to what you just voted on, the rubbish and solid waste collection fees and charges. So if you remember, the last part of that was we issued you a fine letter. The only method we have to bring somebody, we can't go and pull a check out of your pocket, right, to collect the fines? No, we'd never do that. So the only tool we really have to collect the money, unless you choose to pay us willingly, is something like a municipal charges lien that I think Brian can get into the technical details on it. But again, there was some confusion that this applied to a lot of different fines and charges. But if you see on page 29, it's only for rubbish and solid waste collection fees and charges, what we just talked about.
Attorney Winner, go ahead. Can we get his microphone going? There you go.
We got it. Thank you. Through you to the meeting. So if you recall in the last article, I mentioned that there are specific statutory provisions that implement water rates and how you collect unpaid water rates. There are specific statutes that deal with sewer rates and collections. There is not an analog for trash. So the Select Board went through a process of revising the rates and policies for water, sewer, and trash. One thing that is missing from that is the ability to lean unpaid fees and charges for trash collection. We have a statute that lets us do it for water. We have a statute that lets us do it for sewer. We don't have a statute that lets us do it for trash. And so there's another statute, Chapter 40, Section 58, that allows town meeting to specifically authorize liens for certain unpaid fees and charges from a town, provided town meeting specifically authorizes a lien for that purpose. So if you look at the very last section, Roman, excuse me, capital letter A, rubbish and solid waste collection fees and charges. So that means if this is passed, the town can do what it does with unpaid taxes, unpaid water, and unpaid sewer already, which is record a lien that there is a rearage that is unpaid for trash as well. So again, as I mentioned with the last article, this is only closing a gap. We already record liens for taxes and for water and for other municipal utility charges that aren't paid. This would include rubbish on that if they remain unpaid.
Thank you, Attorney Winner. Do you want to, Mark, did you want to continue with your presentation, or?
No, that was the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we're on to technical questions. Are there any technical questions? Going once, going twice, see none. Okay, pro-con debate? Going once, going twice, seeing none. I don't think we need a summary right, Mark. Do we? No? Okay, the body says no. I think you go along with that. Okay, we're ready to vote on Article 21. Clickers in hand. Please vote. One, two, or three. Yes, no, or abstain. All right, Article 21 passes. Ninety-five yes, 12 no, zero abstentions. Thank you all for voting. All right, on Article 22, I'm going to recognize Mr. Lou Jito. Go ahead. Can we turn the microphone on one more time? Motion to dismiss. Second. Who's seconded it? Bob Cohen. Article 22, we have a motion to dismiss, seconded by Bob Cohen. By voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? I hear by the clear, it is dismissed. Thank you. And now we come to the final article of the evening. We're on page 31. 31. Thank you all for staying up this late. Appreciate it. Here's Peter Panis, your oning. All right, I'm going to recognize. One second, please. Also, we're going to make the announcement. Okay. You want to make the announcement first? Okay, I'm going to recognize Steve Kavy for an announcement for us.
So I apologize for delay on this, but I wanted to just make sure everyone was aware that Veterans Day Parade is happening this Saturday, November 11th. It will begin at the VFW Post, 1645 on Washington Street at 9:30. That's when everyone's going to assemble. The parade itself starts at 10:00 in the morning. And the parade route will be through the square to Town Hall, and then we're going to come back around down to go to Faxton Park for a couple of ceremonies there, and then back to the VFW, which is where the, everyone will collect after the event. Looks like the estimated ending time is 11:45 in the morning, and all are welcome to and invited to the VFW at 8:37 Washington Street after the parade.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kavy. Okay, on Article 23, I'm going to recognize Mr. Kavy again to make the motion.
For Article 23, I move that the town vote to amend town of Stoughton general bylaws as printed in the warrant for Article 23 revolving funds for surplus equipment.
Second.
Steve, for me, can you say that one more time? We're just going to put the motion from the floor, from the book on the floor.
Correct. So Article 23, the motion, proposed motion is town vote to amend town of Stoughton general bylaws as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded that? Scott Carrara. We recognize Scott. All right, and I understand there's a, well, actually, let me have the Finance Committee give their report. Go ahead, Vaughn.
Finance Committee voted 4 to 10 to accept and recommend the town meeting. Oh, I think I read the wrong one. Yeah, no, I read the right one.
You did.
4 to 10 to accept and recommend the town meeting Article 22, motion failed. Yeah, it's a typo. It should be Article 23. Sorry about that. Vote 4 to 10 to accept and recommend the town meeting Article 23, the motion failed.
Yeah, there's a little typo there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
No problem. I'll read Municipal Regulations. They voted 0 to 6 to recommend the special town meeting. Motion failed. And then Cynthia Walsh, Municipal Operations Report, please.
The Municipal Operations Committee voted 6 to 1, 6 yes, 1 no, to approve Article 23. With a note, the committee has concerns about who would control the fund. More information is needed for clarification.
Okay, thank you very much. I understand this is one of those articles that has an amended motion. I will recognize Steve Carrara, Scott Carrara, excuse, two of me S's down there. Scott Carrara, my apologies. Getting late.
I used to be Juan Fox. I'm glad he changed.
Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The amended motion reads as follows: That the town vote to amend the town of Stoughton general bylaws as printed in the warrant, except for the sentence, "To fund extraordinary repairs and anticipated replacement of equipment" will be replaced with the sentence, "To fund extraordinary repairs and maintenance." That's the motion, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Second. Who's seconded over here? Elliot Hansen, seconded by Elliot Hansen. Okay, this is like before. There's an amended motion. We have to, at least, debate if we're going to accept the amended motion as made by Scott Carrara. And then we'll, as in the prior Article 22, we will then get the chance, if we accept the amended motion as suggested by Scott made the motion, we can then debate the amended motion, and that becomes main motion as amended, same as the process as before. But first, we have to determine if we're going to accept the language as amended. All right, first up is, are you going to debate the amended motion?
My question is, in general, on the legality...
Identify yourself for the...
I'm sorry, Pat Holburn, Precinct 4. My question is on the legality of the motion, so I can wait until the amended motion is accepted, if you'd prefer me to bring it up then.
Okay, you're not questioning the legality of this amendment?
The motion, Motion 23, I'm questioning the legality of, not the amendment, not the striking out replacement. The whole article, I'm questioning the legality of.
Why don't we, I would suggest, why don't we resolve that right now instead of wasting any time?
If I could just explain why I'm questioning the legality, you referring to me to go ahead?
Well, what's the question, though, I guess?
We've never used a revolving fund to buy or repair equipment, to sell or repair equipment. Our revolving funds are always fee-based. So for example, you take a knitting class at the rec department. They bring in the fees. The department gets to keep it in the revolving fund, and then they get to use that money for more classes. This is a... They're not listening to me.
Okay, can you, Mr. Winner, can you be able to answer that for us?
Could I just finish? I just felt like nobody was listening to me.
Oh, I always listen. I just...
It's okay. It's okay. I talk a lot. I know that. So my question is, when I looked at the Mass General Law, one of the things it says is, in order to have a revolving fund, the departmental receipts in connection with those programs or activities shall be credited to the revolving fund. And there are no, when you sell equipment, that money does not go to the DPW. That goes to the general fund. So there are no receipts going to the DPW. So you don't have receipts to put in this because they don't collect receipts. My other question is, when I looked at the Department of Labor Services examples of what revolving funds are, it says they are to support the activity program or service that generated the revenues. And I don't think by service, they mean repairing a truck. I think it's services provided to the community. So I question, we've never had a revolving fund that involved selling equipment and keeping it in that fund. And this is very important because what this revolving fund does is it bypasses town meeting. So if we give the $250, say, to the DPW, they can spend that money, and they don't have to come for an appropriation. So I do want to verify that this is actual legally, a legal use for a revolving fund, Mr. Winner, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Attorney Winner, please.
Certainly. So let me respond in two ways. One is, I will admit that this is unorthodox. As you are well aware, the Department of Revenue publishes a table of traditional revolving funds, and there's a lot of IGR guidance on that. This is unorthodox as compared to all of that. I am not prepared to say that it is patently illegal and that town meeting cannot vote on it. The town meeting should be aware that because this is a bylaw that needs to be amended, as after the Municipal Modernization Act, these things have to be embedded in your bylaws, the Attorney General is going to review this and will rule on the ultimate legality of it. And so I don't believe there's any reason why you should deprive town meeting of its right to vote on this, on the merits of it. But people should be aware that there is a further review before this becomes effective as a change. And that includes the Attorney General's review, and they have the right to disapprove it if they find that it is not consistent with Chapter 44, 53 and 1/2.
And if I could just clarify, so you can't say it's not legal, but you can't say it is either. The further down the process, if it gets it approved, then it will be determined if it's legal.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to respond to that.
Yes, go ahead.
So there are situations where I would, if I felt that the law was 100% clear that an article is illegal, I would instruct town meeting through the moderator to not take a vote, or that the vote is completely advisory in nature, because town meeting doesn't have the jurisdiction. This is not one of those cases. I think this is a case where it's unorthodox, that's the word I used earlier, but that there's no reason why a town meeting should be deprived, if it's right, to debate it and vote how it sees fit. And the Attorney General's office, who has the statutory authority to decide up or down whether or not it's going to approve this, will make the ultimate decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott Carrara?
Mr. Moderator, just a little clarification on the legality. The legality is the trucks were purchased by the town, the equipment. The equipment in the trucks provide a service to the town. We collect fees for trash, and that goes in. We collect stuff for other stuff, and it goes in. These trucks have been paid for, depreciated. They become surplus. They become albatrosses to this town. We sold, we had an auction. We got $114,000 at the auction. There's still more money to come in. We're bargaining on the brine system that we wasted money on. We're waiting for that to get straightened out. But the bottom line is, every piece that we sold, whether it ran or not, was covered by insurance, and it was registered. Because that's the state law. You can't just bank this stuff and park it off to the side. If somebody had gone on it and got hurt, there would have been no insurance. We saved $60,000 by having this auction. This money should go to the Public Works. I know people are trying to find ways of not getting it there, but this is money that the Public Works wouldn't have to go to the Finance Committee, go through all this, and the truck is down, or they need something to purchase, to put on...
Excuse me, Scott, can I just interrupt you for a minute? I'll give you 10 minutes for a presentation once we accept the language for the amendment. Uh, I'll give you 10 minutes for a presentation, once we accept the language for the amendment.
Well, I was just, just telling them how it doesn't fall the hard line, but it's well within the square. It's not outside the box, it's well within. Some other towns do this, they call it different things, but it, they, it, the equipment gets, gets auctioned, and the money goes in.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott, for the explanation, appreciate that. All right, this is just to discuss and debate whether we're gonna accept the language change. Janice, please identify yourself.
Janice Schneider, Precinct 6. Similar to a question I asked, asked earlier, I'd like to know why the motion failed within FinCom.
Juan Nolking, could we answer that?
Mr. Moderator, do you want me to answer this now, or do you want to get through this amended motion before we get into this?
I'd rather get through the amended motion.
Whatever you want to do.
Moderator discretion.
Yeah, let's get through the amended motion. Any other questions? We could be here all night, so if there's no questions, we can go to a vote. All right, I gotta anticipate, I gotta say that no other discussion on this amendment language. All right. Can I take a voice vote?
Yeah, majority.
Yeah, it's gonna be by majority voice vote, so... Is there a point of order?
There is.
Please state your name and tell us the point of order.
Mark Zemanian, Precinct 1. A previous speaker had a question about, um, and I apologize, Janice, but the point is, we're, we're talking and debating whether or not to accept this amended motion. She has the right to ask her question as to why Finance Committee chose to fail this, because it's relevant to whether or not we accept this motion. If we do accept this, then we're voting on the amended motion, and there's no further discussion about this.
No, actually, let me clarify that.
Please do, yes.
Yeah, I will, give me a moment. Uh, the moderator's discretion is, the Finance Committee, uh, report is on the main motion. Now, it's in the book. This is on the amended motion. Their report pertains the, to the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, would you like me to answer the question now?
No, I would not. Thank you very much.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Moderator, but we won't revert to the original motion unless this fails.
That's correct.
I don't see why it would, it's, it's, okay.
Right. Dave Laurie, do you have a point of order?
I, no, no, I, I just wanted to make, um, a comment on the amended motion, not the main motion.
On whether we're gonna accept the amended motion.
Correct.
As written.
Correct. I was a yes vote on this, based on if and only if they struck the part about replacing equipment. So there were yes votes on the Finance Committee because of the, the merits of the entire article, but I, I wanted to make sure that town meeting would be the only body that could, uh, approve and appropriate the replacement of brand-new equipment. So there are yes votes within Finance Committee, I just want to make sure they get represented in this amended motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Laurie. Eric Coleman, please identify yourself.
Eric Coleman, Precinct 5, a point of order. You don't want any debate on this one, you didn't want any debate on the last article, aren't we here to debate the articles and decide what we want to do?
Well, we're here to see if we're gonna accept the language on this amended motion.
But there can be debate about it, and you're saying no debate?
Well, no, I didn't say that. I asked, is there any more questions or discussion on it, and nobody stepped up. Now, once we, if the party here votes to accept the language, we can debate it. If they don't accept the language, we'll back to the main motion. So I don't see, does anybody else want to discuss the acceptance, whether we accept this or not? Okay, I see a lot of heads, and some people not saying anything. So I'm gonna proceed to the vote. By voice vote, just the majority is needed to accept the language as, on the screen. All those in favor who accepted the amended motion as written on the screen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. Okay. Now, it becomes the main motion as amended.
Mr. Moderator, would you like me to answer the question from a previous speaker now?
Sure, go ahead, you may.
Could the previous speaker please repeat the question?
Janice, Janice Schneider, Precinct 6. As I asked about in earlier motion, uh, this original motion failed in FinCom, and there was no note as to why, um, so my, I would like to know why.
Mr. Nolking, can you elaborate?
Yes. The Finance Committee discussed this at length, this was a, a long, um, presentation and discussion. There was much discussion over the legality of this, because by Mass. General Law, all revenues that are taken in are supposed to go to the general fund, unless it's a special, you know, circumstance. And there was discussion as to whether or not a revolving fund could be created that would be funded not through fees of activities or, or, um, programs, but rather through the sale of essentially taxpayer-owned equipment. So there's a lot of discussion on that. The committee overall was in favor of the concept of an auction, but that's not what the article was about. So overall, there was a lot of discussion over where the money should go, and Mass. General Law, and the legality of a revolving fund being created for this type of, um, money, rather than through, uh, programs, because traditionally revolving funds are created, as a previous speaker had said, they're created to, um, knitting was the example given before. Fees are paid, or, um, in the case of Concom, there are penalties that are paid, but almost all of those things are, fees that are collected, fines that are collected, fines is the word, they all go into a revolving account, but there is no precedent that we knew of or was discussed that any community had established a revolving fund funded through the sale of taxpayer-owned equipment.
So if I understand what you just said, may I ask a second question?
Not at this time, because we haven't heard the presentation yet.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll be back.
Certainly come back. Thank you very much, Janice. Scott Carrara, could you provide us with the presentation, please?
The, the presentation hasn't changed much since the, um, the information I gave you on the sale of the, the, um, equipment at the auction that has been paid for, depreciated, and maintained by Public Works, and we were able to do something good with it, and I thought it was something good that would help the town out, and it would help Public Works out, that, that money would go back into their flow, and they wouldn't have to ask for anything, they'd be able to access it when something extraordinary happened, or they just needed some maintenance stuff to go on the trucks. We might not have another auction for at least five years, because we've done a sweep, I've, I've gone through it with Paul, his mechanics, to see what had to go. This is gonna cut the edge and start the process for the, um, fleet maintenance person that they want to hire, but we have to set down a consistent way to maintain the trucks, when to get rid of them, and don't run them to their grave when they don't, they're not worth anything. We need to get on a program where we find out what trucks are starting to break down, what they're gonna be worth on a trade-in, so we're not buying loaders at 385,000. We're not buying trucks every time for 285. If we can find a truck that's been repo'd, and instead of going brand-new, the truck's been repo'd, and it, and it fits, and it doesn't go out every day, as Paul says, some of his stuff doesn't go out every day, this all helps. And then it doesn't, it doesn't pull down on the taxpayers, we're using the trucks against themselves instead of wearing them out. That's what a good fleet operation does, and that Public Works hasn't had one, ever. And that's why we're in the shape we're in. So pretty much, this will help him out, maintain what he's got, to get it to the point where we can get the fleet stuff established, and then the town will see the trucks not look bad, not be rotted out, and not cost us 30,000 to run it twice a week or more. So that, that's all I can say, I thought it was a good idea.
That's enough, Juan.
Thank you very much, Scott, for your presentation. Okay, now we enter the technical question period. Any technical questions? I see Mark for us. Mark Struck? Then you'll be next.
Mark Struck, Precinct 7. I just want to make sure that, um, maybe through Town Council, on this article is gonna be the paragraph and the boxes below, or is it just the paragraph?
Can we have clarification, Attorney Winner?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker, uh, if you look at the existing revolving funds identified in your bylaw, there's an introductory paragraph similar to this, and then there's a table, and the table contains the statutory requirements listed out. So this table would, if it's this, if this is approved, and then approved by the Attorney General, this table would get inserted in your bylaw.
So then, if this table's inserted, that means that they can't come back in the spring or another special town meeting and ask for funds to be put into it? It's only receipts, correct?
Can you barely answer that?
It would operate in the same manner as any other revolving account, it would always be subject to town meeting and a future vote.
Yeah, but the box here just says only receipts, it doesn't say other funds.
Could you repeat that, Mark?
Under department receipts, it only says receipts from the sale of surplus DPW equipment, but you're telling me that a selectman or whatever could put in an article and say, "Oh, we have to put in $200,000 each year to this fund"?
Do you understand that question?
Yeah, I think I understand. So the way the revolving fund works under the statute is, you have to identify the receipts that are attributable to the revolving fund, um, and so that's what this table does. The way, if someone wanted to change which funds went into the revolving fund, they'd have to amend this table. So what would come before town meeting would be a request to change the language under department receipts to include an additional source of receipts. Um, but you wouldn't appropriate directly into the revolving fund, which I think is what you were suggesting.
Right, like normally, we, we have extra money in Finance Committee, and we're like, "Oh, we can put it in this revolving fund, or this revolving fund." We can't with this one?
No.
Okay. Uh, my second question...
Mark, I think you asked a couple of questions along the line.
It was the same question, you guys need me to re-answer it?
I'll give you one more, all right?
Uh, so at the start of this, there's gonna be zero money into it, and the speaker, um, said, "Our next auction isn't gonna be for five years," so is this gonna sit empty for five years?
Could anybody answer that? Paul, maybe?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Based on the answer to the last question, I would say possibly.
If that's the case, then why are we having a special town instead of a regular?
You asked you two questions, Mark, but thank you very much, appreciate it. Peggy, you're up next, please identify yourself.
Peg Sewick, Precinct 2. Um, according to the explanation of our attorney, we could form this, it would have to be approved by the, you know, GA or whatever.
Attorney General.
But, um, I'm also curious to know if by doing this, we would eliminate a borrowing to buy the equipment that we need, and it would eliminate, you know, interest rates and that kind of thing, having the money on hand to do this, would that work?
Scott, would you like to answer that one?
We, we are not purchasing any vehicles out of this account, and it, it will be capped on the amount of expenditure. What, what's happened is, the sale had to go off before this town meeting, so it's, it's gonna take, um, another article to move some money out to put in here, that basically the sale money went into the general fund, now it would be up to this body to release some money to go into this, so it can start. Then, I'm not saying that another piece might come available that can't be traded, it should be auctioned, that money would then go in here, that's how the receipts will go, and Paul will take out of it, like, instead of coming to town meeting, or if they expended monies out of the other, um, account that they have, there wouldn't be a panic, there wouldn't be asking the, the finance, "We need money, we need money, we need money," and then it gets aggravating, because they sat on that board. So if this sits here, and, and he only needs to take a little bit out, or he needs to buy filters, because they're gonna be giving that a, um, a great price, because like I said, once we go fleet, we're not gonna buy a Ford, a Chevy, and an International, we're going all one, one-in-kind, so that when you look on the wall, they're all Chevy filters, they're not going, "Oh, jeez, why'd we buy all these Fords? We don't have them anymore." That's all we're trying to eliminate, is to set up something to help with fleet.
Okay, thank you.
Because later on, we're gonna be back asking for it all, and the money was just made at this auction, but everybody wants, "Oh, let's put it in the, in the main fund," and then we're gonna spend it foolishly, after all the hard work that these people put in, Fran Brutini from Procurement, I helped her, we set up the auction.
I think Peggy's all set.
Thank you.
Asking the answer. Thank you very much, Peg. Juan Fox, you're up next, please identify yourself.
Juan Fox, Precinct 1. Um, the question is, why did municipal regulations fail this, zero to six?
Okay.
John Rock?
Yeah, I know people were wondering that.
Please identify yourself.
John Rock, Precinct 3, Chairperson of the Municipal Regulations Committee.
Hi, John.
And so I know that people were wondering about that, and so the, the reason was, we were concerned about the, uh, amount, $250,000 per year, we thought that was excessive. So I guess a question to, uh, select person, Scott, would be, how was that, how was that amount?
It's not possible, because there won't be that much money in there. If, if money went in and it built up, and then more happens and more happens, they wanted to cap it, so that you couldn't drain it right out, so it would never be empty. They, if, if it stays in there, and there's 500,000 the next year, you can't grab it, and that's why, when I saw the word "equipment" in there, sometimes "equipment" means different things, like, it could be a plow that got broken that only fits that truck, that's equipment that is to that truck. People think "equipment" means we're gonna buy backhoes, that's not what this fund is for, this is like extraordinary repairs and, and maintenance piece, but that's...
Right, I, I, the committee felt that, uh, you know, if the amount was reduced, that...
Well, basically, it will be reduced, we'll never get it to 250, we only incurred 114,000 at the auction, maybe a little bit more, so you can't drain it.
Anyways, that's the answer for the Municipal Regulations Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rock.
You're welcome. Now people can sleep at night.
Yeah, okay. Juan, you have one more question, if you so desire?
No, that was my only question.
Thank you. Next up, Sandra Souza, please identify yourself.
Sandra Souza, Precinct 1. Um, my, my question was relating to why you wanted to do this when we've already appropriated an approximately $150,000 this year at town meeting for your budget for maintenance and repairs.
We thought we were gonna get a lot more money for the equipment, a lot of it had waited, it had sat for years, so we didn't, there wasn't a lot of heavy spenders out there, they were being tight. We got a lot for stuff that you wouldn't think you'd get a lot for, and then, but, to answer your question, what was that again?
Well, town meeting already, already approved in the budget money for DPW for repairs and maintenance, so, so this would be in addition to money we've already appropriated, so it kind of...
Talking, talking to Mark, Mark Tisdale, talking to Mark Tisdale when we were at the Finance Committee, um... Talking to Mark Tisdale, when we were at the Finance Committee, Laura Gunn asked if we could give some back, and I don't think that's a problem, that whatever we can get in here right now, we have to let that other stuff sit because it was budgeted. And if we can't get town meeting to put in some money, then we won't be able to let go of the other money. But if it went in here, then I could see it being, they would probably be able to give back some.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Peter Murphy, please identify yourself.
Peter Murphy, Precinct 2. The question I have is, when you talk about funding extraordinary repairs and maintenance, throughout the town, you have several pumping stations, generators, or whatever. If today, hopefully not, one of the pumps, one of the generators was to fail and this here did not pass, how would you get the money to get a pumping station to get it back online tomorrow? What is the procedure?
Paul, would you be able to answer that for us? Or Mark?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Moderator. If we didn't feel like we could make the repairs through the budget, we would ask for an emergency transfer through the Finance Committee.
So, there is a method in place to take care of extraordinary repairs or whatever. So, you would have to go an overnight, midnight questionnaire to get money to repair that pump, that generator, whatever, correct?
I don't believe the approval by the Select Board and then the Finance Committee would happen overnight. I'm a little confused.
Well, I mean, you wouldn't let a sewer pump or a water pump go two, three, four weeks without... That's what I'm getting at. You have a certain amount of flexibility to replace a generator or a pump, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next up, Christine. Is that Christine?
Hi, Christine Yakabuchi, Precinct 6. I'm not sure if my question's kind of off-topic, but what, with this kind of motion...
I'm sorry.
This might be for Mr. Warner.
That's fine.
What's to stop other departments from basically creating their own revolving fund and then having their own petty cash? I just, nothing against the DPW. I think they should have their money. But I just, what if the library sells off all their old books and then we have petty cash? Or, do you know what I mean? Like, what's the difference?
Could anybody answer that for her? Anybody like to answer that?
Yeah, I can answer that, I think. I don't think there is a difference in that regard, similar to what Scott was saying. You're selling books, they're providing a service to the kids, and now they're not anymore. So, it's a similar situation.
So, this is my second question, is, so essentially, then we're kind of skirting town meeting, right, as far as how we're spending the money?
I don't think Scott's intentions is to try to skirt town meeting, to be honest with you.
I don't think he has any ill intentions. I'm just trying to clarify what we could be setting precedence for.
I think he's trying to create an account that gives Paul and his departments grab money for emergency situations, and that's as clean as it can be, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. The intent of this is, if we have to replace a motor and a transmission for $19,000 and we have to do it yesterday, and we have $12,000 because it's May 31st left in our maintenance, vehicle maintenance repair line, that we can do that in the immediate. I believe that's the only intent of this, for that situations like that.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Please identify yourself.
Yep, Phil Connor, Precinct 2. I'm just wondering if anyone can help clarify for me why the DPW specifically would need this sort of account compared to any other departments that have equipment and fleets and face unplanned and unbudgeted changes? I just, and I mean this truly with curiosity, what makes the DPW unique compared to any of the other departments that come to town meeting every year?
Could anybody explain that? Provide an answer, please.
I can try, Mr. Moderator. The DPW certainly has by far more equipment than any other department with a fleet. I don't suppose technically there is a difference, though. But I know that the Police Department, for example, and the Fire Department have policies adopted for how long they can keep vehicles and/or pass vehicles down, things of that nature. We're working on one, but we don't have one for the Public Works. So, that's another added reason for this account.
But could a well-designed policy make this account not necessary?
Well, is that a question or...
Yes.
A statement?
No, that was a question. It had a...
You have to raise your voice at the end, then, Scott.
Thank you.
All right. Would anybody be able to answer that?
I suppose it could, but we currently don't have that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Elliot Hanson. Please identify yourself.
I just, if, I was going to do the comment section. I want to get a line early.
That's right. Okay, anybody else? Seeing none? Okay, we're going to pro and con debate. Elliot, you're up next.
Why, thank you. Elliot Hanson, Precinct 1. I've got a couple of things here. There's nothing... It's a good idea to have some money hanging out or in reserve. So, the question is here, a couple of comments, if you will. The money was allocated for the DPW. They have some, in a sense, leftover because it's surplus equipment, and they want to sell it. So, that could be, I think, an accounting thing rather than some other method. If you have auctions and the auctions are strictly surplus equipment from the DPW, then that money, it's already been allocated, some of it is just retained, we'll say. But if you forgive the pun, I don't think a revolving fund is the correct vehicle. I think it's just a matter of accounting. So, I, there's nothing wrong with the intent of this. It's just, it's the method, the methodology is the problem I have a sticking point on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Dave Laurie. Please identify yourself, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct 6. And in the general fund, you can't earmark money. So, if you had money just show up in the general fund, you couldn't say, "Oh, and this has to go back to the DPW." There is no special accounting to it. It's the general fund. It's a giant black hole that a lot of money gets sunk into, and it just evaporates, it disappears. The beauty of this article is the fact that, when we vote every year, there's always a shiny new object that we all have to vote on, and we all love the fact that we're going to get great services from the DPW as a result of it. I can't remember one argument ever in which somebody said, "We're only really appropriating 95% of this shiny object because there's going to be 5% at the tail end of this thing that's going to get sunk back to the town as general fund money." We appropriate, we appropriate 100% of that thing, 100%. They're just capturing the tail end of that 100%. That's all they're doing. It's coming back to the same entity that we originally appropriated the money. That's all we're doing. And as far as, like, the word unorthodox, I kind of like the word unorthodox. In reality, what the word is, is leadership, because it's never been tested at the state level to say it's good, it's worthy or not. So, we're taking the leadership position that, guess what? If the state says, "This is a kosher idea," not to use a pun because of the word orthodox, but the idea is that if the state says it's good, everybody's going to point to Stoughton and say, "Did you just see what Stoughton did? They found a way to capture all the value of the appropriated equipment that they did at town meeting to keep it where it belongs, which is the department we originally appropriated that money." I implore everybody to vote yes. And guess what? We might clean out all that rust, because they never had that carrot out in front of them to say, "Guess what? If you go through the work of clearing out all that rust, it's going to give you a little something back." So, the energy you put into that auction down the road, the energy's there because there's something that's going to be great for your department. So, you're capturing money that's theirs, you're motivating them to clean out the rust, and we might get recognized as a great leader in the state of Massachusetts for doing something unorthodox. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, Sandra Souza. Please identify yourself.
Sandra Souza, Precinct 1. I applaud Mr. Laurie. I hated following that, actually, because I don't think I'm for this. Surprise. I do applaud the efforts of Mr. Carrara for taking care of the surplus equipment in the way he has, and the DPW for doing this, because I think it is great that we can sell our surplus equipment, the things that are no longer of use to us, and get money back for the town, because that is what we should be doing. However, I just don't think that this is the way to do it, because I think it should go back into the general fund. I also think that there's a reason that Mass General Law has towns and cities doing it this way, as opposed to, you know, being on the forefront, being the only one that wants to do it, or the first town to do it this way. There's a reason that it's set up as funds going back into the general fund. It also does skirt town meeting. We, as a body, are required to make these decisions every single year of how we're going to dole out the money that we have in the pot. And sometimes, it's very difficult to decide how we're going to do that. So, if there's money that comes back into the pool from DPW equipment, then we may need to use that in another way, for another department, because we don't know next year or maybe the following year how much money we're going to have to work with. Right now, we may have enough, but maybe next year we don't, and that $250,000 from the surplus equipment may be necessary to keep another department afloat, to keep some police officers on the street, or somebody in the library, you know, full-time. So, I just think that it should not be taken away from town meeting members and from town meeting votes to set up this revolving account. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Bob Combe before you, Pat. Then, Bob Combe was sitting down, he raised his hand a few times. Identify yourself, Bob, please.
My name is Bob Combe, Precinct 5. Public Works have a lot of trucks down there, a lot of old trucks, Max, rubbish trucks. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we bought a motor and a transmission. I think that came over $350,000. Those trucks are now back in operation, but emergencies do come up. Those trucks, most of those trucks, the rubbish trucks, are on the road four days a week, working hard. The big trucks, we have four or five Big Max, a couple of them are getting up in age. Something goes wrong, an emergency of an engine, there's $150,000, I bet. I'm not a mechanic, but emergencies do create. I give Scott Carrara a round of applause for getting rid of that junk heap we had down there, and actually got some money for it. It should have gone to the junkyard many years ago. My gripe is, we let the trucks go so long, and you can go into these Sanders that are date back to 1972. They don't use them much, but we got some antiques in there. And you're using Sanders, and something goes wrong, you want your streets safe. This is, and again, we're not skirting town meeting. To go through the process to get money, you got to truck down. It costs time and money. So, I support this article 100%, and I hope the rest of you do.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on. Pat Colburn?
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4. I also applaud Scott Carrara. I think it was fabulous to get these trucks at auction. I would have no problem if we put a line item for extraordinary repair in the Select Board's budget, or put an extra line item in the FinCon budget. The problem I have here is that it's for a specific department. And just as Ms. Yakabuchi said about the books, I can pretty much see with my crystal ball, police and fire, and everybody else saying, "Hey, what about us?" So, my concern is that we're eroding town meeting, and we voted through the contracts without a single question, $8 million, because they were put on a consent agenda, so we didn't even discuss them. And now, if we put this here and it bypasses town meeting, and other departments want it, then that's also bypassing town meeting. And that's what my concern is. And, you know, I think the reason I was so against the trash fee is that bypassed town meeting. So, I'm just very concerned about where we might be headed precedent-wise. That's why I'm against this. I'm all for repair money. As I said, if it was somewhere else, I'd support it entirely, but I can't put this in a revolving account. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is Jess Minor. Please identify yourself.
Jess Minor, Precinct 5. Move the question.
All right. That means a cutoff debate. Okay, I'm going to take it by voice vote. Needs a two-thirds. All those in favor of cutting off the debate, sit... Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Thought I heard a second. George Delensky, second. Thank you, George. All right. This is the cutoff debate by voice vote. All those in favor, it needed two-thirds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
No.
Okay, I think the ayes have that. So, I declare that a vote. This is to vote on Article 23, the main motion as amended as appears on the screen. With clickers in hand, please vote now. One, two, or three? One yes, two no.
You need a two-thirds vote on this or a general vote?
It's just simple, right? Just a simple majority.
Thank you.
It says it right up there on the top, on the right. And before you leave, Town Clerk has a quick announcement. And while we're just calculating the numbers, don't forget to turn in your clickers to your precinct chairs and turn in your assisted listening devices to either me or Kevin over there. What do we got for a vote here? Sixty-four no. Article 23 fails. Forty-five yes, sixty-four no, one abstention. All right, Town Clerk wants to make a quick announcement. Please stand by. Should be quick. And we need a motion to dissolve in a minute.
Thank you, everybody. Just a reminder that the papers are available, and some of you have not been in to pull your papers for town meeting representative, and I can't understand why. So, please, come in and pull them so we can get as many people into town meeting to join us. Thank you.
Cindy, I recognize you. Motion's were made to dissolve the special town meeting by Cynthia Wallace, seconded by George Delensky by voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
No.
Uh, maybe. Okay. The ayes have it. Thank you. Everybody have a good night, and thank you for coming this evening.